Six o'clock, I will call the April 27th, 2021, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, Mr. Scott Farthing, our county attorney, has offered to provide the invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank thee for this lovely day that we've been blessed with today. We're grateful for the many blessings which we receive and the privilege we have to live in this county. We are grateful for the gospel of Jesus Christ. We ask thee to please bless all of the citizens of With County, that they will have happiness and success in the things that they desire to do. Please bless everyone here with good health and help us all to be friendly and courteous to each other. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
And the first item of business tonight is presentation of some sports resolutions. The first one we have is Kobe King from Fort Chisel High School Swim.
Come on up, Kobe. Congratulations on it. Before we get you face this way. With County Resolution 2020-15, a resolution honoring Kobe King of the Fort Chisel High School Swim Team. Whereas, Fort Chisel High School sophomore Kobe King completed a very successful 2019-2020 swim season. And whereas, Kobe advanced to the 2019-2020 Virginia High School League State Class A, Class 1A/2A Swim and Dive Championship in Richmond, Virginia on February 20th, 2020. And whereas, Kobe defeated the competition capturing the 2019-2020 Virginia High School League 1A/2A State Championship Title in the 500-yard freestyle with a time of 5 minutes 1 second, 70.71. And whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Kobe King for his outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now for, therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Kobe King in recognition of his 2019-2020 Swim State Championship Title. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 27th day of April, 2021. Signed, Brian W. Wall, Chair.
Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 2020-15.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Kobe. Next is the George With High School Girls 200-yard Freestyle Relay Swim Team. That is a mouthful. And this was actually for the 2019-2020 season. Do we have any of those members?
Tatum Robinson, Laura Buckett, Gabriel Gomez, and Morgan Dalton. With County Resolution 2020-16, a resolution honoring George With High School 200-yard Freestyle Relay Swim Team. Whereas, George With High School 200-yard Freestyle Relay Team defeats an individual by 200 yards through W. Peters. Junior, Tatum Robinson; Senior, Laura Buckett; Graduate, Gabriel Gomez; Junior, Morgan Dalton. The team did a very successful 2019-2020 team. And whereas, George With High School 200-yard Freestyle Relay Team advanced to the 2019-2020 Virginia High School League State Class 1A/2A Swim and Dive Championship in Richmond, Virginia on 20th February, 2020. And whereas, George With High School 200-yard Freestyle Relay Team defeated the competition capturing the 2019-2020 VHSL 1A/2A State Championship Title with a time of 1 minute 48 seconds and 31 tenths. And whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Tatum Robinson, Laura Buckett, Gabriel Gomez, and Morgan Dalton for their outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution with the relay team in recognition and recognition of its 2019-2020 Swimming State Championship Title. And be it further resolved that copy of this resolution be incorporated into official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 27th day of April, 2021. Signed, Brian W. Wall, Chair.
Entertaining motion to approve 2020-16.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Tatum, don't take off. Swim on back up here. With County Resolution 2020-17, a resolution honoring Tatum Robinson of the George With High School Swim Team. Whereas, George With High School sophomore, then, Tatum Robinson completed a very successful 2019-2020 swim season. And whereas, Tatum advanced to the 2019-2020 VHSL State Class 1A/2A Swim and Dive Championship in Richmond, Virginia on February 20th, 2020. And whereas, Tatum defeated the competition capturing two individual 2019-2020 VHSL 1A/2A State Championship Titles in the 200-meter individual medley with a time of 2:10:42 and the 100 breaststroke with a time of 1:08:84. Whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Tatum Robinson for her outstanding dedication, athletic ability, and sportsmanship. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisor presents the resolution to Tatum Robinson in recognition of her 2019-2020 Swimming State Championship Title. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 27th day of April, 2021. Now entertain a motion for 2020-17.
So moved.
Have a motion, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Hey, Tatum, come back up here. With County Resolution 2021-13, a resolution once again honoring Tatum Robinson of the George With High School Swim Team. Whereas, George With High School junior, Tatum Robinson, completed a very successful 2020-2021 swim season. And whereas, Tatum advanced to the 2020-2021 VHSL, VHSL State Class 1A/2A Swim and Dive Championship in Christiansburg, Virginia on March 6th, 2021. And whereas, Tatum defeated the competition capturing two individual VHSL 1A/2A State Championship Titles in the 200-meter individual medley with a time of 2:09:73 and the 100 butterfly with a time of 57:92. Whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Tatum for her dedication to excellence in which we all should strive. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Tatum Robinson in recognition of her 2020-2021 Swimming State Championship Titles. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 27th day of April, 2021. Signed by me. And I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations once again. I know this is the third or fourth that I've gave you. Six, six state titles. And next we have the George With High School Golf Team. Come on up, coaches and players. Wow. This is With County Resolution 2021-14, a resolution honoring the George With High School Golf Team. Whereas, the George With High School Golf Team completed a spectacular 2021 season. And whereas, the George With High School Golf Team advanced to the Virginia High School League's Group 1A State Championship at River Course in Rafter, Virginia on April 19th, 2021. And whereas, the George With High School Golf Team scored a total of 304, defeating runner-up Castlewood by 46 strokes and earning George With its fifth Virginia High School League 1A State Championship in six years. And whereas, senior Peyton Coe won the Virginia High School League's Class 1A Individual Championship with a score of 69. And whereas, Benson Blevins shot a 73, Daniel Goode a 77, Peyton Philippi an 85, Reese Vaughn a 115, Josh Crigger a 121, and Stephen Jackson serving as alternate. And whereas, Peyton Coe, Benson Blevins, Daniel Goode, Peyton Philippi were all named to the 1A All-State Golf Team. And whereas, the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends the 2020-2021 George With High School Golf Team comprised of Benson Blevins, Peyton Coe, Josh Crigger, Daniel Goode, Stephen Jackson, Peyton Philippi, Reese Vaughn, and coaches Johnny Beamer, Danny Southers, and Wendy Dove for their exemplary season and dedication to excellence for which we all should strive. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to the George With High School Golf Team in recognition and appreciation of their achievements. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this 27th day of April, 2021. Signed, Brian W. Wall, Chair. Entertaining motion to approve 2021-14. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Coach Beamer, I shot a 304 one time. All I got was asked not to come back, back by Mr. Goode.
You just want to hold on one second. We give him a lot of them.
I started this several years ago. I just want to go on record that Coach Johnny Beamer is now the winningest Beamer in George With history. And, you know, Tatum was up here and I knew Gretchen used to tell me what time she got up in the morning to haul Tatum to practice. Would all the parents stand up? And I think y'all deserve a round of applause. And y'all are free to go if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We have one person signed up, Mr. Jeff Wright. Mr. Wright's making his way up here. I haven't seen him, but congratulations on your retirement for those of you that don't know.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wright was a dispatch supervisor at the sheriff's office for many years and continued his education, went on to retire as a magistrate for the 27th Judicial District. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. This is the first time I wore a tie since I retired. And a collared shirt. I just want to, how long do I got, generally? I want to keep it short, but get to the point.
Usually three minutes, but time.
Yeah, I got it.
Timekeeping's not our strong suit sometimes.
Okay. I just want to give a brief opening statement and to give you our, some supporters back here, a couple of our talking points. What I'm getting ready to say, I'm not placating you guys. I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I've worked around and in local government for 34 and a half years. It's a tough job. Most of the people that come in front of you, they're fussing about something or bringing a concern to you. I know there's a few diplomats still left out there. But you guys, you get the brunt of it. Come budget time, I've been in the closed-door budget meetings. Sometimes it gets ugly, people say nasty things, and then people don't talk for 20 years to each other, kind of silly. But I want you to know, I appreciate what you do. Local government is a tough, it's a tough spot sometimes. So I mean that. And I want to, want to mention just a couple people real quick. I know Stephen, he may have a little tougher job sometimes because he gets stuck in the middle of everybody. You got the board of supervisors, you got the citizens, you got budget and all this stuff. So, you know, maybe he takes, he takes, has to take heat as did all his predecessors. Two people that I want to note, my supervisor, Coy McRoberts, and Jamie. Forgive me for calling y'all by first names. I apologize for breaking protocol. But I've worked with everybody so long, it's, it's hard.
No, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. But I think I know everybody pretty well, except maybe Gene. But probably over a decade ago, decade and a half, my mom, she was retiring from the school system. They run into some bureaucratic paperwork glitches. My mom called Coy McRoberts, boom, it got fixed. And I've never forgotten that. I appreciate you, brother. And Jamie, you've been through some unspeakable tragedy. I cannot imagine. I just want to say, I appreciate you persevering, doing your civic duty, keeping your nose to the ground stone.
Appreciate it.
So we're thinking about you. I think, I think I'm going to, I was going to, we're going to talk about the industrial farm and then the bank erosion thing. The bank erosion on New River is the most easily fixable problem. So if you'll forgive me, we'll reverse it and we'll talk about that one first. Let me back up just a little bit. I'm friends with some of you guys on social media, and when I tag you in these posts, I don't want you to think that I'm cheap-shotting or hey, gouging, you know, whatever. I'm not like that. I'm a big chain-of-command guy, and I know that the brass, which is you all, you don't like to be caught off guard. And if you have a heads up on what's coming topic-wise, you can at least get your wheels turning, what questions to ask, or if you have any resources or anything like that. So when I tag you something, or we got pictures and photos, I want you to know that I'm not poking the bee's nest because I respect you guys, but I just, I'm just kind of giving you the courtesy and the heads up. Forgive me if I get a little worked up over a couple of these topics. We've been dealing with them for a few years. The boat ramp at Austenville. We're having a lot of bank erosion. I talked to one of the old-time farmers yesterday. He's run a small farm in Austenville for roughly 60 years, a little less. He feels that the majority of landholders that have river bank, riverfront property has lost about six feet of property. I know my dad has lost 30 to 40 feet of property. I'm not an ecologist, I'm not a hydrologist, but I think it's kind of common sense. It's because of the constant sloshing and constant boat traffic. We don't have problems with a lot of the natives. We don't have problems with kayaks, John boats, small prop-driven. Most people know how to act. But we're having a lot of jet propulsion boats. And this is no exaggeration. You're welcome to come down and sit on the bank one day at the house. They routinely run 30, 40, maybe approaching 50 miles an hour. It's mind-blowing, out of a really small motor. And when they go by, you can stand on the bank and watch the bank evaporate, literally. They can do more damage in 15 minutes than you can do in, a flood can do in two days. No joke. And we've had problems with float planes, jet skis, barges, party barges with double outboard motors, huge Mercury outboard motors. And it's destroying things. We don't see blue, a little disclaimer, not that there's anything wrong with this. Everybody knows my politics in this room. I'm a conservative. But on the flip side of the coin, I'm not a radical Sierra Club kind of guy, but I am a pretty strong environmentalist. That is my disclaimer. And ever since the boat ramp and the boat traffic, there's no blue herrings, there's no little green herrings, there's no egrets, there's no wading birds. It's gone. I watched an eagle attempt to build a nest a couple weeks ago, week or so ago, about 300 yards up above Austenville Bridge. Jet boat scared it, it flies off, drops its stuff. We're loving the New River to death in Austenville. And here's where you guys come in, if you are willing to do so. I've talked to the game commission. I don't, I don't really want to name those guys, but Benjamin Boyet, he's a young game warden that I have a lot of faith in, and he did provide me with this information. Let me back up. Some of the haters, they think that because me or my family or some of my neighbors and friends on property on New River, that we're kind of selfish. We're not. The river is for everybody to enjoy. But, you know, we don't, we're not, we're not implying to keep, keep anybody away. But what I suggested at the time, after I caught a lot of heat, was a no-wake zone, just like at the lake, just like at the beach, wherever. A no, a no-wake zone and a speed limit. And Ben, the game warden, said that can be facilitated, but not by a citizen. It has to be inquired upon and facilitated by the local governing body. That's you guys. So I'm asking for you to think about it, talk about it, help us out if you can. We need a speed limit. A no-wake zone would be really good. At least from, and you might want to jot these two names down, this is just my recommendation. I'm a layman, I'm clueless on the specs, but having been a lifelong resident, I think, maybe I'm qualified enough to say this, from Indian Branch, also known as the Lime Branch, to the mouth of Cripple Creek. You say, hey, man, that's a, that's a long stretch, you know, that's a two or three-mile stretch. Well, that's, that's where all the boats come. And that, and a lot of these folks are non-native. They come from North Carolina, they come from Northern Virginia, they come from surrounding counties. We don't have a lot of problems with some of the local people, although there are a couple local people with jet props that wreak total havoc, but that's a conversation for another day. Indian Branch, AKA the Lime Branch, to Cripple Creek, the mouth of Cripple Creek. That would be a good starting place. That's where several farms are, that's where some recreational property is, where people camp out, just own it. And as a, as a matter of irony, and this is the last thing I'll say about the erosion, you know, the assessor came to my house the other day. He is a nice guy. He takes five minutes, you know, he looks around, does his thing, you know, and generally, as any local government evolution, your proper taxes is going to go up every few years. And I'm sitting there thinking, and I was kind of in a bad mood that day, I hadn't slept really well. And I was, and that's the day, you know, they were wreaking havoc in front of my house and on the river. And I thought, my property taxes is about to go up, and I'm losing land, so I'm paying more on less. And so sometimes it comes down to a little bit of principle, sometimes it comes down to safety. One of my neighbors, I could name him, I know Coy, know him, he turned a lawnmower over. The bank collapsed on him last year. We're getting a lot of undercut banks. He was in Roanoke Hospital, he about checked out, from what I gather, had a lung recovery. Lawnmower fell in on top of him after he was on his back in the river. And so, so that's that. But if you guys could check into that, local government entity requesting a no-wake or a speed limit, we would be more than appreciative, more than appreciative. The second item, it's more complex. Let me put out a disclaimer first, well, let me tell you the second item first. I won't name the farm, we all know who it is, the industrial farm. I'll refer to it as the industrial farm. It's on both sides of Walton Furnace Road. About twice a year, they spray it, I will assume with Roundup, as it kills it overnight. I would refer to you my, to my Facebook page to look at the photos today. It seems that every time they spray, last year they sprayed with helicopters, there were clouds of this stuff. And on the days they spray with helicopters, I go out on my deck and there are hundreds of dead bees. And I live, as a crow flies, a mile away. But there's bees making little bitty circles and doing their thing, and then they're dead the next day, and they're piled up all over your house. They spray twice a year, generally. And this past week, they sprayed, it killed hundreds of acres. I, I'm not a farmer, I can't judge hundreds versus thousands, I just know it's a lot. And then we had a half-inch rain. And then some of my neighbors called me and said, hey, man, there's a bunch of dead fish in Mill Creek. If this was flatland in Kansas, I mean, it's bad enough, but it's a watershed. You got Budle Branch and Mill Creek running right through the middle of this farm. The confluence of these little streams, there's two or three little streams, you'd have to walk them or look at it on a, on a little, it may show up on Google Earth. There's two of them that's, that's small, two of them that's pretty large. You got a confluence, and then near Fincastle Lane, you have another confluence. Then it goes into a river channel probably as wide as the conference room, and it enters New River maybe 100 to 200 yards away from the With County water intake. And so, all of this herbicide is going straight, and when it rains and floods, you can see the path of the water because it's a different color, you know, it picks up sediment and, you know, you And, you know, you can, it's kind of cool, you can stand on Austenville Bridge and you can see how one stream tracks within another, how their different water temperatures and consistencies. And so what happens, you can see where this channel comes out, and depending on the flow rate, some of it is, you know, it has to do with the flow rate of the river. If it's strong, it'll keep it back a little bit. If it's down, the creek will have more velocity and really put it probably in the intake. But some of that's subjective. So, I've had a few neighbors call me every time this happens, and that's where we're at. I know that one of the neighbors has contacted maybe DEQ or the Department of Agriculture in Abington. And this is where I want to stop and put out a disclaimer. There's been posts on social media about, oh, the county's doing this to us, and, oh, the farm is doing this to us, or whatever. I don't think it's anybody's intention to kill the citizens. I don't think it's the board's ignoring of the problem, I don't think it's the farm's intention. But you've got a synergistic effect. Maybe the county and the county folks, I mean Coy, he might have been around when, when they started doing the water project, and none of the rest of you, none of the rest of you were. I think sometimes it's a case of, you just don't anticipate some of these problems, and they crop up. And that's why we have local government. It's initially, initially it's no one's fault. It's not the county's fault, it's not the farm's fault, it's not anybody's fault. Now, if the problem persists and persists and persists, then it becomes somebody's fault. Because then you don't have action, you have inaction. So, I would like for, it's a complex problem, I don't know what the solution is, I'll be frank with you. I don't know what the solution is. You've got a huge landholder and a farm, and you're going to tell them, hey, you can't farm? And then you've got this, all this money, infrastructure money that's been invested into the pump house. You guys can't throw that away, I get it. But, but we can't be feeding the citizens Roundup. And when all the fish are dying, and there's no Helger mites, there's no crawd adds, there's no fish, something's wrong. You don't have to have a PhD to know that something is wrong. And they spray probably a quarter to a third of this watershed. And it's pretty sobering when you look at it. It probably wouldn't hurt, far be it from me to suggest to you guys how to run the show. That's not what's happening here. It probably wouldn't hurt, after a good heavy rain, to do some testing from the tap in some residences. I don't know how much it costs, I don't know who does it, you know, I know there's a local lab in Christiansburg. A few of my neighbors have been concerned enough to say, hey, we're thinking about calling these people maybe. I don't know. Let me make sure I've covered some of the stuff. That's about the long and short of it.
Jeff, I'll start with the last one. I know last year we, we had similar.
Yeah, a request came up last year, and in fact, I gave Mr. Wright the copy of the gentleman's contact information spoke last year, Jim Atwell, who's the Department of Ag, he came in here and spoke to him last year. I gave him that contact information, and I'll try to follow up with him, go over the Reed's terrain, see what, you know, what's anything, the information they can provide.
Yeah, and I think too, Mr. Bear, I know, I know Mr. Wright's talking about what's coming into the New River. The same group has sprayed property that they own around the Reed Creek as well, so we need to check that as well. If Mr. Wright's saying that there's dead fish and the habitats suffering, we need to look at the Reed Creek as well.
I didn't want to mention Reed Creek because, but I've had a couple of people in the Reed Creek basin to bring it up to me because they saw some of my photos, but I didn't want to speak for them because that's another creek and not the river. But, but yeah, it's a pervasive thing, and I don't know, I mean, other than, maybe this is total conjecture, but other than banning the spraying of Roundup, which is not realistic at this point, I don't know what the solution is.
Well, and that's, that's what we looked at last year. You know, everything's regulated by somebody else. We can spur them along, but, you know, unfortunately.
I know.
You know, we're bound by the Code of Virginia, and you're well versed in how well written that is sometimes.
Yeah. One of the game wardens, he was literally just pulling his hair out because some of the problems that he, normally you would think that he could address, codified language would not let him address. You know, and I realize that maybe sometimes you guys want to be a little more aggressive on the approach, but maybe you can't.
There's a lot of stuff we'd like to do.
I'm sure. But having, having said that, if there's any way to find a loophole, or to address it from a, change the paradigm, look outside the angle, I think it would be good, I'll leave you with this part in thought. I'll let this gentleman decide if he wants to say this publicly, but I don't know if it's DEQ or Department of Ag. They supposedly put a monitor in one of the branches of the creek, maybe a few weeks or a month ago. You know where the Finn Castle Monument is on the curve? I think it's somewhere down in there, like some little cross-stream monitor. I don't know the results, I don't know if they found any, and to be frank with you, I don't know that it even made a difference because we've had two floods, two floods? We've had, we've had two pretty high water events, and I suspect it would have took their apparatus out. So, anyway, that's the spiel.
But before you take off, Jeff, going back to your bank erosion, what's, and I know the thing with the plane, I couldn't believe that, but with the, with the speedboats, what I'll call them, but and I don't have as much experience as some people up here on the New River, but, you know, I've been down there and I've seen trees floating. I've seen, you know, it used to be mainly kayakers and people and John boats fishing.
Correct.
You know, it looks to me like if you've got a boat and you want to go fast, you go to Clayder Lake. But what you're saying is, the traffic's increasing with that type of activity.
Yes.
And maybe the, if I'm hearing you right, maybe the state regulations haven't kept up with the change of activity.
It's going to come down to a locality.
Because, I mean, what scares me is there's a lot of kayakers and we, you know, we advertise New River as a place to ride your kayak and all that.
That's what I'm saying, no exaggeration, there are days, and I enjoy this, I really do. I walk out on my deck sometimes early in the morning to have breakfast, eat a bowl of cereal in the summertime. Literally, I've seen two hundred kayakers, multicolored kayaks and kids and church groups and school people. Fifty, twenty, you know, going by at a time. And then I see the wild man in the airplane, and then his buddy has a blue airplane. You know, I see them landing just beyond places where you see the kayakers. The jet skis, there was two guys under the bridge doing acrobatic stuff on jet skis, you know, diving, looping, whatever. Last week, there was a pretty large radio controlled boat that was shooting a twenty foot roost. Sounded like a, you know, a two-stroke weed eater rocking around. And when I saw that, I thought about the two gentlemen that just crashed in Clayder Lake. And, you know, I know they had one fatality, maybe two, I don't know the details.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, okay. But eventually, I'm afraid, besides the erosion thing, you've got safety issues. Now, the further away you get from the ramp, the odds go down, but within an eighth of a mile of the ramp either way, it's bad. And it's just like the chairman says, there's a lot of floating debris. I will say this, some of the jet boats have a double hull. I have seen them go across the falls at thirty miles an hour, I have seen them hit logs. They're built for it. They hit it, they go airborne, they keep on rocking. So, that's really not a big deal for them.
I rode an airboat once. Notice I said once.
Once.
Just because something can do stuff, doesn't mean you should.
Correct.
That, I think that's only going to get worse down there, Jeff, because that farm in the corner there, where the creek and the river on the market.
Yep, yep. You are correct. I'm not a, I'm not pro zoning. But considering Franklin County and Smith Mountain Lake just got another solar farm, what they announced it two days ago. You guys maybe end up having a headache with a solar farm coming. We probably need to start thinking down those terms, because you're going to start seeing more recreational people, you're going to see solar farms, wind farms, we're going to start seeing some undesirable stuff start to creep in. And my issue, or our issue, and some of the neighbors, I think it's maybe just a little foreshadowing.
Mr. Bear, will you get with, I guess, Mr. Farthing, and see, get us some information on the no wake zone?
I think there's actually a form you can fill out.
Well, that makes it simple.
Makes it easy, yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate y'all's time, thank you.
All right, that's all we had signed up for Citizens Time, I'll close Citizens Time. The next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices.
I have a motion to pay the invoices.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any question or discussion, or any invoice that any member would like to pull out? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith. So approved. Next item is the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting, April thirteenth, 2021. Entertain a motion to approve. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, is there any corrections to the minutes as presented? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry. So approved. Next item is old business, Mr. Bear, do we have anything under old business? All right, moving along to reports, Treasurer's report from Ms. Quinn.
Good evening. It's not outside, but it's not in here.
Ms. Quinn, it is perfect.
I figured you would say that.
You tell your parents if they got an extra side of beef, they need to hang somewhere.
Their season is over. It wrapped up Monday. Most days, at least get ice for your Pepsi or something. Well, good evening to everyone. In your packet you had the March financial report, it's hard to believe we're already this far into the year. But the consolidated account, figure out what I'm doing here, contained a balance of seventy million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. And of that, the balance in the general fund for the month ending in March was forty-seven million, five hundred eighty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Most revenues for the month kind of stayed the same, some bounced around, as you probably noticed in the financial report from Ms. Williams for her, where she breaks out the lodging meals, sales tax, things like that. Sales tax did go down on what came into us in the month of March, which would have been for January's collections, because that's how far behind it runs. And of course, lodging was down, meals was staying about the same. But I think there was an error last month in what was reported in lodging, because I'd spoken to the finance director and she picked up an incorrect number. So we, we look like if you go back to last month's report and look at this one, like we've had major issues, but it's correct in this report, so. But we're just kind of holding our own at this point, everything seems to be going really good, considering we're still, I guess, in COVID, trying to get out of COVID, wanting it to end really soon, however you want to label it. So, that's all that I had on that. Did anybody have any questions on the finance report, or on the Treasurer's report anyway?
I'll just say, I appreciate seeing real estate at ninety-nine point two percent of voters right now, and seeing personal property at a hundred and five percent of voters, from where we are right now.
And I was, that's what I was going to say, the percentage is impressive. And down on page seventy-eight of our package, my old favorite games of skill. Do you know, what's the current status of those things? I've heard different.
My understanding is that was not renewed for the new fiscal year, that that was a FY21 tax funding mechanism that it didn't extend. Have you seen anything different, Mr. Bear? Yeah, they did not renew that, so we enjoyed it while we could.
How long did that last?
Yeah, because that usually averages, I want to say, six, seven thousand dollars, something like that a month for us, so. So, yeah. But no, they did not renew that, I'm not really sure why. If you want to label taxation easy, that was kind of an easy taxable item.
Well, they're apparently making more money than they're paying in taxes, or they wouldn't have them ever were.
Apparently. I've heard people talk about, you know, going in at different locations and, and, you know, every couple of days, and, you know, it doesn't matter what time they stop in, sometimes there's the same person, you know, they'll be sitting there, you know, every few times they're sitting there playing, and they'll talk about, you know, the money that they get and things like that. So apparently, people are having success at it, but we were too, in having easy revenue coming into us that, you know, wasn't directly affecting our citizens and our taxpayers, so. But that's, the last status that I had on that is that that ends June thirtieth.
That's what I'd heard, but I didn't.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have anything for Ms. Quinn? Just thank you very much. Yep, thank you, and your staff, for what you do.
Since you brought up the collections, we'll touch on that for just a little bit then. When I was here last meeting, we had just mailed out the delinquent personal property notices, and I had noted to you that we'd had a system issue in being able to get the real estate files. So finally, after thirty-one days, I got that resolved. And I've approved the, approved this afternoon, so the printers will be mailing and printing those bills later this week. So the real estate delinquent notices will be coming out, probably be received back in the county either Saturday or on Monday. So you'll continue to see those numbers drive up. But also, staying on the topic of real estate, right now, tentatively, trying to work out some location logistics right now. So I don't know for sure if this data is going to stand or not, but we will be looking at having a real estate tax sale, a judicial tax sale on June the twenty-ninth. That sale, right now, there's about fifteen parcels that's listed on that sale, and that is primarily to finish up the properties that Mr. Crockett had submitted to the collection attorneys back in 2013 that were either scheduled for sale in 2016, or they had varying issues that they were pulled off of the sale at the time. So we've continued on through the court process and a lot of those legalities that the attorneys had to go through to get those ready for sale. So right now, we have about fifteen, unless something would change with those. But like I said, a tentative date is June the twenty-ninth. I don't have a location yet, I'm still trying to work out that, or get that worked out logistically, because last time we were in the circuit courtroom, we did not have enough space. With current restrictions, there's not really enough space in here to accommodate everyone. So probably going to have to look at maybe moving to the meeting center, or somewhere that we can have a large. So probably going to have to look at maybe moving to the meeting center, or somewhere that we can have a large space and be able to accommodate a lot of folks.
There's a large space up at exit seventy-seven, I'm sure that they would.
Well, we can do that. We wouldn't have to pay rent either. Good idea, not all that, Mr. Vault. I knew you were chair for some reason. Okay.
It's not that. Thank you.
We weren't gonna tell you the reasons.
It was more than nobody else wanted to do it, but thank you.
So also, in addition to that, I am still continuing to send out real estate properties to the attorneys on a somewhat weekly, bi-weekly basis. Right now, I have probably about a hundred and thirty properties that I've sent out to the attorneys. And that's not even really scraping the top layer off. So if properties owe two or more years of taxes, they are eligible for judicial tax sale. If the value is ten thousand dollars or less, then it's a different process. You don't have to go through as much legality on that. But we're trying to work on getting our, our real estate records cleaned up and get those, those funds coming in. Real quickly, on some other things, personal property related. Next week, we will be placing DMV holds or stops on taxpayers that have unpaid personal property taxes. They were, there was a notice included on their personal property bill that they had until April thirtieth to pay. And effective May first, the holds would be put on. So usually don't hold to it to May first, because we allow for the mail to process. But we will be adding those on sometime next week. So again, it's not anything personal with anybody. It's just, these bills, by the time we get to May, they're now five, five months past due, six months past due. So just, just doing our jobs on that. Be resuming warrant debt issuances, have a court date scheduled for May, so we'll be picking that back up as well. So I think that more or less covers kind of what's going on with us, and trying to move forward with collections. And, and just see where that takes us. Any questions on my rambling tonight? Is everybody awake?
We're awake.
Yeah, I have, I have a question.
Sure.
Any of that property located in Burns, Florida?
For the one in June? Not sure if I have any on that one, but there will be on a future one, possibly. I'll look and let you know for sure, Mr. Roberts. You'll, you could be scouting for, for a new rec center location down there.
That's what he's looking at. Can you do a search, three acres?
Well, of course, any of it, you can go out and do recreational activity on. It might not be facility, you know, suitable, but, you know, you can go out and walk or run or jump or whatever. So you can still get your exercise on the property. Anyone have anything?
Anybody else?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
All right, next item is Buildings and Grounds Committee report.
Building and Grounds Committee recommends the revision of existing property line between forty-three to twenty-six and forty-three to twenty-six M. Place a stormwater management facility and conservation easement with the forty-three dash twenty-six M property leased by the Apex Authority.
Mr. Baird, do you wanna explain that?
Yes, I recommend, if you will, look at the map on page ninety in your packet. Years ago, when the county purchased this property, the property was split into two parcels. Underneath the red and a little bit of the yellow line, you see right there, right below Chapman Road, and there's a black line right there. Basically, the property was split at, at that time. The following construction of the Apex site with stormwater management, in the north, right up at Chapman Road, you will see where the end of a stormwater management pond extends out into that area. Just below that, south of that, you will see another area that's sort of outlined by a red box, that has a little finger of a stormwater management pond sticking out there also. Right below that, you will see a seven point oh acre conservation easement area. That area.
That area was established for our stormwater management plan when agreed, when it was decided to build the barn and potentially gravel the parking area on the west side of the Apex facility. What this proposal is, is to go ahead and redraw the property line, roughly is what's shown in red, to put the ponds and the conservation easement all associated with the Apex property, county property, but at least the Apex Center. And then that leaves the balance. At the last meeting, you all were discussing on beginning to market that property for potential sale. This takes these issues out of it, and, and we can sell the balance. The balance left is roughly forty-five acres. The recommendation from our county engineer, just to the east of the seven point oh acre conservation easement, you'll see a little yellow line that is drawn right there, recommends dividing this into a northern tract of twenty-nine and a half acres roughly, and a southern tract of fourteen point seven acres. Can all be sold jointly to someone, but also gives the advantages of potentially selling them separately. The northern tract is probably much more commercial related. The southern tract is more potential for residential development.
Coming from committee, the recommendation doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Anything else from Buildings and Grounds?
No, sir.
All right, moving on to new business. Our first item is a consent calendar. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is the B dot six-year plan. Mr. Baird, do you wanna start, or you want us to just fight it out?
Well, I, I am checking right now. Mr. Fowler had to also attend a meeting in Bland County tonight. And he was going to be available by telephone, but Bland, I think, was having three or four public hearings tonight. He just sent me a message, he is available. So if you'd like, we'll call Mr. Fowler and get him on, on the phone as well while we're doing this.
I, that's, I mean, that's fine. I don't know if anybody's got any questions, besides how much money we get.
I'll go ahead and just open the discussion while she's getting Mr. Fowler on the phone. What's included in your package is the current six-year plan. And then on page one fifty-four are the plan options. And we also have a handout that Mr. Fowler handed out, or sent to us today, that Martha has handed out. So. Mr. Fowler, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me good?
Hang on one second, we'll hear you better. Now, talk again.
Can you hear me?
Try it again, Mr. Fowler.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, guys and girls.
Good evening.
Andy, we have just opened up the discussion. What's included in their packet is a copy of the current six-year plan. We have handed out the information that you have provided. We also, I believe, have the same information in the board package. I was trying to confirm, we had all the roads. Based on the information previously presented, you indicated we had approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to consider adding roads to the secondary six-year plan this year. Is that still correct?
That is correct, and that equates to three point five miles of additional roadway that can be added.
What was the dollar amount against that?
Seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Yes, and with that, it typically, historically, we, we spend to build a real rustic route, on average, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per mile. So that, that equates to three point five miles that we can, we can add to the six-year plan.
So, Mr. Fowler, I see Connors Valley Road on here, at two point four miles. Is there any way that we could split that up and do sections versus try to do it all at one time?
Yes, we, we can do it at any increments the board would like to, to present. And too, I will say, basically with Connors Valley Road, our, I guess, inability to add this route to the six-year plan in previous years has been due to drainage issues. And I've been utilizing maintenance funds to kinda chip away, one section at a time, at those drainage issues. And we're about to start another project similar to the one we just completed last fall, through Nat Kelly's section of the roadway. We're, we're gonna continue doing that same type of work, improving drainage, moving stream. We actually, I was able to acquire permits to move a stream bed further away from the road, so that we can widen the road and raise in another section. So basically, I'm using maintenance dollars to, to, to get that road to the point to where it can be added. And with the work that we're getting ready to start, we can, at this point now, start adding Connors Valley to the six-year plan.
Well, I appreciate it, and I'm sure the residents sitting in the room appreciate it as well.
And with that said, I will address one, one thing that may be a question. We've checked into the Virginia code and the best practices as, as far as related to cattle guards. Because on, on that route, there are two cattle guards on either end, one on either end of Nat Kelly's farm. And we can leave those cattle guards in place. We may improve those while we're, while we're improving the road through the six-year plan. But they can stay in place, and what we will most likely have to do is just provide signage on, on each end of those cattle guards that will warn motorists that it's going to be restricted through that cattle guard to one lane.
Okay. I think, I think that's fair.
Okay. So that, that was one of the obstacles we, we were concerned about. And I had Pam Heath, our engineer at the residency, check into that. And we, we can build it real rustic in leaving the cattle, cattle guards in place.
On, as far as the roads, Gap of the Ridge Road, the final point four miles of that, eighty-eight thousand, or the cost to build, we discussed that last year, and I guess me and Mr. Smith made a blood promise.
So I'm gonna hold my end of the deal up.
And, and the only, the only other one is, is Scenic Trail. It's oddly enough, it's point four miles. If you look at the, the average traffic count of a hundred and ten vehicles, and it's, it's, people are using it as a shortcut. I, I don't know, Mr. Baird, how many homes are up there? I mean, there's several, but that's the traffic.
More traffic than there are, than I would expect of homes, yes.
And I will say, I, I told the lady that I, I believed her, and I'd bring it up. And she said the only reason it was never added was because the, the late Charles Dix, when he was on the Board of Supervisors, lived there. Didn't feel right adding it to the list, and, and the residents have suffered because he was on the board. So I, I would ask for the consideration of that. And that's, both of those are eighty-eight thousand.
One seventy-six.
That's one seventy-six. And if, if you guys and girl consider that, I'll referee and let y'all fight over the other six hundred and some thousand.
So, and I, I'll go back to the, the Connors Valley. I'm, I'm good with, I, I would love to see it all done, but I also don't wanna take up other roads that needs help as well. So, I mean, I'm good if, if we could do a mile of it, so start from where the asphalt stops now, thinks it the first category, if I'm not mistaken, and then go a mile from that point. So that would be two twenty going by, well, Mr. Fowler said it's two hundred and twenty thousand per mile, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could interject on that, I know, I'm gonna allow you guys to, to discuss it out there. But I will say, on Connors Valley Road, if we added one mile this year, then whatever the allocations are next year, there's a potential to add a little more next year. And then if the six-year plan continues, on the path we have been on the last three to four years, we've actually been getting, like, when we add a road, we've, we've actually been getting to that road on the plan earlier than six years. So it may be possible that if you added a mile of Connors Valley this year, and add the rest next year, that in that la, that fifth and sixth year, you can catch the whole thing.
That, that's what we did with Gap of the Ridge last year, Mr. Fowler. We, we've done all of it but the point four. And, and I don't wanna say Mr. Smith promised that he would add it this year, but we could go pull the record, and I'm pretty sure he'd promise.
We did negotiate, and I, I'm gonna add my words.
You say negotiate, I said prom.
Negotiate.
So, so I'll let you guys continue negotiating and promising, and I'll step out of, out of the conversation for a second, unless you have a question.
Mr. Smith, was that one point four miles, or just one mile?
I mean, we can do, we can go one point two, that way there'll be one point two left, or either way. I don't wanna hog up all the points.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll interrupt again. One more, one more comment. I, I will do this if, if the board would like. I know you would like to make all, pretty, you know, pretty close to all your decisions tonight. But I can go out tomorrow, or have one of my staff go out tomorrow, and, and, and take a ride out Connors Valley, out to that one mile, or that one point two mile destination, and see if, like, one mile gets us past a certain home, and then there's like a, a gap before the next one. Because what I would hate to do is set a distance, and we're like a hundred feet short of just catching one more house.
Yeah, we'd hate for you to do that, too.
So.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Mr. Anderson, one point two, that's roughly around Mr. Millstead, right, somewhere in that? Yeah, if you could do that, Mr. Fowler, that'd be, that'd be great.
Well, I can check that tomorrow and get that information right back to Stephen. But, but you guys can tentatively say one point two for now, if you want, and then we can, we can tweak that tomorrow as needed.
Okay, thanks, sir.
I'm not trying to leave Cinnamon Run out, just, it's the largest run, road that's there, but it's just a bigger amount. But I put in all the rest of them at full value, except for Cinnamon Run, and you're at seven hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, which means there's still thirty-six thousand dollars there. So just giving you an idea of where we are. And I, I did Connors Valley at half of it, so two sixty-eight, four hundred.
Say that again, Stephen.
I did Connors Valley at two sixty-eight, four hundred. And then I put all the rest of the roads into my spreadsheet, except for Cinnamon Run. Hope nobody's here to shoot me for that. And that comes out to seven hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred. So we're still thirty-six thousand dollars underneath that.
And that'll give you room to play with the stopping point at Connors Valley?
Yep.
Right, 'cause I mean, thirty-six thousand doesn't go far.
That's, that's putting Porter at sixty-six thousand, Scenic at eighty-eight, Riverview at one thirty-two, Edgewood at thirty- at one-thirty-two, Edgewood at thirty-three, Connors Valley, two-sixty-eight, four-hundred, Gap of the Ridge at eighty-eight, Bluebird at seventeen-six, and Poplar at twenty-six-four.
Who is Bluebird?
I looked at that today, Coy, and, um, I could not remember where it was.
Bluebird? I thought it was out.
Yeah. No, that's, I think that's Blue Sky.
That's Blue Sky. Bluebird, I think, is.
Bluebird, it's blue something other than Avon Ho.
I looked it up today, no, and, so help me, I have forgotten. I'm old.
And that's in the Avon Ho area.
It is, it's Avon Ho.
Yeah, it's off Painters.
It's off Painters here, yeah. Off Hilltop.
I'm glad that wasn't in my district, Coy.
Yeah, it goes through by Lester Waller's, right?
My, my, Andy didn't score on the clock beside. My number-one concern would be Riverview Road. We've got six new houses going in there, and it's pretty raggedy. If we could get something done to it, the ditch is getting walloped out in the road, or you go up that long hill, if it rains, it's rough.
Yeah, and in, in consideration of the traffic count at four-twenty, that's the, I mean, if you want to think about money best spent, that's, that's a good place to put it.
I don't know where you got that traffic count from either.
Somebody must have been driving back and forth across the, the road.
Maybe they've all gone to the river.
Um, I, I know the, I know the Anises live on Connors Valley. Is there anybody else out in the audience that lives on Connors Valley? How about Riverview? Any other roads? Okay.
There would have been for Porter Road, but I didn't.
But we got one on Porter Road.
I don't know if it's getting her household.
Yeah, Porter Road, Andy and him worked on it. The whole road itself would not meet the full criteria and would take too much to move. The northern portion of it would be able, and that's what they've got on here, the point-two-seven miles.
That's what I.
And that hit several of the houses down through there in the process.
Do we need Mr. Fowler anymore? Does anybody have any questions for him?
I guess while we've got him on the phone, if there's anything came up, and Coy, you asked me about something the other day that I just emailed him.
Yeah, about sixty-nine, there at the top of the hill where Gones live, they asked if they could put some guard rail, keep them cars out of that field there. You know what I'm talking about?
Stephen did send me an email on that, and I'm going to have my contract administrator, he, he does all our guard rail estimates, I'm going to send him out to review that location. And what we've been doing, and, is, on, on guard rail, what we've been doing is we've been utilizing the county safety money that we allocate each year. And we've been, each, each of these guard rail requests that we get through the board and through the work order system when citizens call in to the, the eight-hundred VDOT number, we've been addressing those guard rail and installing those in locations where we agree that they need to be installed and utilizing the county safety money. So we will look at that, and it, and if it appears to be a good location, then, then I'll get back with Stephen with an estimate, and we'll, we'll utilize county safety money to install that guard rail.
Okay, we appreciate all you do.
Stephen, did you talk to Mr. Fowler about Reed Creek Drive around the creek that I talked to you about?
Washing out the, the, the.
And the road kind of looked like it's giving in along the creek line?
I don't remember, let's mention it while you're here, right?
So, Mr. Fowler, Reed Creek Drive, I forget the actual addresses, but it's once you get down to the creek where the road's along the creek, the road's in pretty bad shape right there. And I know, especially once you get toward the, the one-hundred side before the creek enters the river, the road's pretty rough right there. And I know that's a, that's a school bus road, the school bus goes through there. And if you meet something in that one area, if the school bus has to meet another vehicle, it's going, it's pretty dangerous right there.
Okay, I'll have our maintenance crew go out and look at that, and we'll address any issue that needs to be corrected.
And then I have one more, and I'll, I'll send you an email on it.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll double-check. I know he gave me the re, address range through there, and I, I thought I sent it to you, but I'm not certain, but we'll make, I'll make certain we'll send that to you, Andy, if we haven't already. Andy, the only other question? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
The only other question I have, um, I would like to try to schedule, tentatively schedule for our public hearing for this. Is May twenty-fifth a, a good date for you? That would give us ample time to advertise it.
Yes, that works for me. And then, basically, what we would, would do with that public hearing is, is go ahead and, and vote and agree on the roads that will be added. And then, I'm supposed to have all my public hearings complete. In fact, the reason I couldn't be there tonight, and I apologize, is I just left a public hearing in Bland County and, for the six-year plan. And so, basically, by the end of May, we need to have the public hearings completed and resolutions completed and signed.
Mr. Baer, I have the address now.
Twenty-fifth will allow you guys to get the resolutions completed, that'd be, that'd be fine.
And, Mr. Fowler, I have the addresses for the Reed Creek Road.
Okay.
Uh, it's from resident fourteen-four, or fourteen-fourteen to seventeen-seventy-eight.
Okay, that will help.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
So, Andy, if, if we finish up our discussion tonight then, and sort of have an idea of where we're going with these roads, that'll give us plenty of time to do, I think it requires one public notice, is that correct?
Yes, I just need to, now that I know the date, I just, we, we put the notices in the newspaper, um, two weeks prior to the meeting.
That date worked for all of you all? Thank you.
Mr. Fowler, before we let you go, just two things. Number one, we've had several civic groups out picking up trash. As you know, our, we can't get our normal trustee crew from the regional jail. And I just wanted to compliment your people on getting the bags picked up quickly. I, I know down Stony Fort, they, they picked it up one day, and I seen your folks out the next day snatching the bags up off the side of the road. So thank them for that. And also, the, the Goyan Fork Project on the six-year plan, I actually seen them in the early phases of it. I was out there the other day, and the, it looks really good, and I think the residents are going to be tickled to get that done. So, so thank you and your staff.
Yes, thank you. And, and it's, it was a coincidence that Route Fifty-two trash pickup, I, Stephen and I have been in conversation about the, the trash pickup for months. And, you know, obviously, we've, we've had less ability during the pandemic to, to get inmate crews to do trash pickup. But I just so happened to be riding out Fifty-two that day they were picking up, and I was like, I was thinking, what are these, how do, how do we get inmates? So I called Stephen, I was out on Fifty-two and called Stephen. He said that they actually were able to get inmates for a couple of days in With County and Pulaski and a couple of other counties, I think. So, so that worked out very well. I contacted our area headquarters and let them know that they're, they're lining the highway with orange bags, so they went and picked them up the next day. So that worked. And then this, this past Friday, I don't know if, if you guys have gotten any feedback, but we, we've gotten some positive feedback. Uh, the Bristol District, and actually statewide, there was a, there was a trash pickup campaign that, that the VDOT has, has called the Virginia Is For Lovers, Not For Litter Campaign. And on Friday, across the state, um, VDOT crews basically dropped their normal maintenance activities and went out on various routes and picked up trash. So throughout With County, our crews picked out, picked up trash. I'm, I'm, I don't know the number of bags yet, but picked up quite a bit in With, Grayson, and Bland County. So I just wanted to mention that, 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 we, we had done that Friday. I don't know if that's going to be, if there'll be another time that that occurs, but I was glad to see that campaign take place, especially given that over the last year, we, we haven't been able to, to get the inmate crews to help us pick trash up.
Well, well, thank you guys for that. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler? Go ahead, Coy.
Andy, I wish, well, I just want to say thank you for all the work you're doing to Pope Road. I don't know, it looks good. I just wonder what kind of completion date, and are you going to?
It's moving on good. We, um, they've got all the pipes installed, and then there, we actually went back and reevaluated the, the pipe install and the drainage in the area of Mr. Roy Cox's driveway. And came back out, I looked at it again with our engineers, and, and we, we decided that it was in VDOT's best interest and obviously in Roy's interest as well. So basically, this, this helped a, a situation that, that, basically, we created there at Roy's by, by increasing the size of the two culvert pipes that cross Pope Road toward Roy's house. We increased those from a double twenty-four-inch pipe to a double thirty-six. And in doing so, that, that inevitably put more volume of water onto Roy in crossing his driveway, which only had one thirty-six-inch pipe underneath. So we have gone back and reevaluated, and we, uh, we've decided that we're going to cut Roy's driveway and install two thirty-six-inch pipes, and then fix his driveway back, and, and open a channel up through there for a, a good, a good steady flow through and under Roy's driveway and out his property on the lower side toward the creek. So in, in doing that, I had to request another environmental permit to do that work on Roy's property. So we're continuing the roadwork, but, but we're waiting on that permit, which we should have hopefully within the next few weeks. We're waiting on that permit so that we can do that work on, on Roy's property. And then, and then we'll move on to the tar and chip phase of the project. So midsummer, that, that project will be complete, and, and we'll have a hard surface road through Pope Road. So it's moving along nicely.
Okay, we appreciate.
Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler?
I got two things. Andy, it's Gene Horni. One is, I have complained about a pothole on St. Peter's Road. It's west of Jonas Town Road. It's close to where the church used to be. Actually, my daughter was complaining about it. She said it was between the Yow lines. I told her to stay on her side of the Yow line, she wouldn't hit it, but, you know. The other thing was, guard rail, you talked about guard rail a while, while ago. If you happen to be looking for a place to put guard rail, it has been mentioned on dry road as you come off of Cedar Springs Road. That, right after you come off and go up our little ways, you're going up a hill, and there's a, quite a drop-off on one side.
Okay, dry road. So it, it's, it's about how far off the intersection of Cedar Springs?
Uh, probably three-quarters of a mile.
Okay. All right, we'll look into that one, too.
All right, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Anything else for Mr. Fowler? All right, Andy, hang up quick.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Do we need to?
I, I guess.
Action now, or just?
They, when, when we have that public hearing, they like to pretty much have, you know, the roads on there if, if we're going to do it. I mean, we can always make any changes. So I guess, are, are you all fine with, with that and whatever the differential that's left, put it on Connors Valley Road?
I mean, yeah, I think whatever's left, yeah.
I, I think either do that, or if there was quite a bit left, you could do a part of Cinnamon Run, but I don't know that you'd have enough to do a very big section of it. So I think if you put it on Connors, it would be fine.
Well, and we'll have them look at where that stopping point is. If it ends up being, you know, a, a good point is one-point-three or four miles, it'd be the whole thing there. If it's better at one mile, and it puts some that can go back towards Cinnamon, we can see if there's a dividing point on Cinnamon or not. But if that, that works all right, and at the next meeting, we'll make certain, just sort of have a draft of, of all this out there.
Thanks, sir.
If, if you all are, are fine with that, we'll proceed in that manner.
Sounds good.
I'm fine with it.
All right, moving on to the staff reports. First on our list is Assistant County Administrator, Ms. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If your money was on me not making six months, you need to pay up whoever you made the bet with.
We need to add personnel.
This is the first time that I've, I've been on for staff report, so I did want to briefly go over some of the things that we've, we've done over the last six months, just so we know where we're at. First off, the mass appraisal system that we've been working on for the Commissioner of Revenue has just completed its beta install. So the next step here, coming up May twelfth, is the final install. So we'll, we'll have that system completely done. It won't generate the taxes this year. They're going to continue to use the legacy system and generate the taxes this year, but then the system will be fully functional, everything will, all the values and things will be in, starting with the completion of the reassessment on January first. So we'll have that system installed. Do want to mention Kathy and Todd have been very good at going through this. Kathy, I, I know it's a stressful time of year for her to be doing this, you know, with the, the senior credits and, you know, the, the taxes being due and all the other things that she's working through right now, for her to be doing this at the same time. She deserves some credit for being able to make it through. And you can stop me anytime we go through this if you've got questions. The broadband partnership, we have our responses due for the request for qualifications and request for proposals. That's due on Monday at four o'clock, so we'll start evaluating those. That, that gets us in shape to submit a, a state funding application starting in June. So you'll be, you know, you'll have contract documents coming back as we, we start this first public-private partnership, that hopefully we'll, we'll get some broadband rolled out. We'll also get some, some guidance from the federal side on what we can do with the American Rescue Plan money. It may be that you get the, get the opportunity to use some of that on broadband rollout as well. Tomorrow, the consultant that we've hired for the comprehensive plan is going to, to be in town. They're going to do some, some beginning interviews and tours, get some feedback on where they need to be going with the comprehensive plan, get some, some ideas about what they need to include by traveling around With County. So some of the staff will be out with them as they do that. Been working on the comprehensive improve, or, excuse me, on the capital improvement plan. The basic layouts are done, but you know that we're waiting on that federal guidance on the American Rescue Plan before we, we can finalize that and get you a public hearing and get that capital improvement plan completed. I know we've all actively been wondering when we were going to get the Public Information Officer hired. We, we have extended an offer to a candidate, and that candidate has accepted pending screening. We're, we're not going to say who it is publicly yet, but I don't anticipate any problems that person will start on May the tenth. Looking back over the, the last few months, the CARESAC projects, we, we've wrapped up fire department pickup trucks, and you've got some nice publicity out of that. Like the picture in the paper, that, that turned out really good. So folks should, you know, see the benefit from that in, in their neighborhoods as those fire trucks roll out. The ambulance purchases are also complete. We, we've completed the broadband study. We, we've got a bunch of PPEs still sitting up in the storage building in Fort Schisel, and I'm trying to get that rolled out to all of the departments. And most of the departments have responded back about what their needs are, so we'll get that out to them over the next couple of weeks and try to finalize that as well. You've seen my COVID-19 updates. You, you've seen the venue operation study that you requested as part of the budget. That's been delivered to you, although I think we still need to have more conversation when we can look at. we can look at the spreadsheet that I referenced in it. Been working with your emergency management coordinator to evaluate fire apparatus. Been working on new employee policies and handbook that hopefully will roll out with the new calendar year in January. That's a good time of year to do new employee handbooks and implement any policy changes. Got other projects going on, some grants that we've got applications for and that have been funded. I know, Mr. Chairman, you in particular have referenced my residency several times and hopefully we'll get closed and into a house here in the middle of May, so.
Not for Blackfish District?
No, it is not. And just so you know, I have been acting as your Freedom of Information Act officer for about two weeks now, and that will be transferred over to the Public Information Officer when that person comes on board. But just to review, in those two weeks, we've had a bunch of requests. We had three requests for emails between supervisors, and that request was fulfilled today with limited redactions. There was a request for information on a grant that was received by the voter registrar, a request for property maintenance records, for emergency response records related to a Bland County crash. Why they ask us, I had to ask. We didn't have any records, so there wasn't a report given on that. We had a request for records relating to all towers and all tower leases that we have. That was an out-of-state request, so I didn't fulfill that request. We also had an out-of-state request for names, salaries, and information regarding all county employees. As it was an out-of-state request, I did not fulfill it. There was one local request for budget information and a request for building permits. That's a regular, routine, monthly request by one of the agencies that puts together reports on building activity. Have had the opportunity to do some webinars and training as well, and just finished an article that will be in the May newsletter of the Virginia Local Government Managers Association on broadband access and equity. The president of the association asked me to write an article this month, so I complied. Just a few things going on.
You mentioned your six-month anniversary. You know, the first month you were here, I think we all got a lot of compliments, but you were the new guy, so it's real easy to get to. Here we are, you know, at the end of six months, and I just want to say you're, they used to call it when I worked the state, knowledge, skills, and ability are just above par everything we've asked you to do. I personally think you've done a great job. You're very thorough, and I appreciate it. I didn't get you cake or anything.
I can't believe it's already been six months, but we're really enjoying you being here, so you're doing a great job.
And just to clarify, when you say that I referenced your residency, I've just tried to put you in some homes that you didn't want to live in.
See, derelict houses, trailers, campgrounds, am I missing something?
Ms. Quinn remembers when we had live-in camp, or lake manager. I thought about bringing that back. He was not interested. Well, Gus does, too, so you know.
Well, from a staff perspective, it's been very beneficial. It's been very beneficial to find some local experience that came in. I mean, you don't know what we did. But the learning curve for, with county government over Rocky Mountain government was, but the knowledge and everything in there has been tremendous, a big asset for staff. So Mr. Volts, you had said earlier in the year about how we wanted to look at organizational charts. He said, give me through my six-month period, but there's a markup of the organizational charge, and obviously there are areas that are very strong suit for him to help out with. We'll be looking at that.
And I really, you know, my normal complaint about the speed of government has really been reduced on the county admin side since they've heard you.
We do, we do try to keep that in mind.
With the list, everything he's had, he's said he's done. I wonder what Mr. Bear's doing. See, that's what you get when you've been here longer than six months.
We will see if we can't pull even more off of Mr. Bear's.
Well, and I will say, and I know Mr. Cook says that in jest, but you know, part of the reason that I really want to see that position filled is to free up Mr. Bear to be more involved in the economic development side of the county government, and especially with STS coming. It was, I don't want to put words in Steven's mouth, but you know, when they called and said, hey, we're going to do a site visit, he didn't have to clear his calendar with personnel issues or this, that, and others. So I know that was nice, and that probably sped up the speed of government. On your broadband study that you've done?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to end up on the cell towers?
That's complicated. Each site will be individually negotiated. So it may be that if we bring in a partner that wants to own the tower sites, that we're providing a smaller portion of the funding than we would if we were developing the site. If we need it for public safety radios, it may make more sense for us to build that site and then lease back to the provider. It's just going to have to be negotiated out by site, and we've got that in the proposal. Long-term, it's probably more beneficial for somebody else who has the equipment and the manpower to be able to take care of that than it is for us to on a regular basis, because that means we're going to be hiring somebody to come in and do the tower maintenance and do the climbing, and we're going to try to not build anything that requires a flashing red light at the top, but you know, if you have to go taller than 180 or 200 feet, you'll be into that as well. So the more we can stay away from that, I think the better off we are, as long as the citizens get the fixed wireless broadband that they need to expand their access.
Yeah. I don't, I don't like government trying to run a business and get us in trouble. You just go out there and 77.
There are times when it's beneficial to own those. There are a lot of times when it's beneficial not to. If you can make really good rent off of them, it doesn't hurt to own them, but you have to be in the right place in order to get that kind of rent.
But we do not want to be the provider. We do not want to be the one that's charging you the monthly bill. We're not looking at making an authority or whatever. I think worst-case scenario would be us owning some towers that we lease to the third-party providers to provide that stuff. We do not, we just, there's no reason for us to go into the broadband business.
I agree.
Private sector can do it better, and it looks like we're going to have plenty of people who are interested in that. We've got an existing telecommunications provider that has been very active in trying to figure out the partnership. We have several new players who are not in this market or in a Virginia market, but want to look at what they can do to expand here. So I think we're going to have plenty of competition to review and look at and pick from.
And we can, we can still negotiate, even if they own the towers, we can still negotiate space as far as our public safety needs.
And we actually have that in the RFP document, too. We wanted to make sure that we reserve that for future use. Thank you. And if you all can't tell, I'm really happy to be here. Thank you for the opportunity.
And we really appreciate you being here. And just what you talked about, the question that was asked about what Mr., the chairman just asked, you've already got that in the RFP. Those details is what we all appreciate, and I know Mr. Bear does as well. So thank you for everything that you're doing.
It makes for lengthier documents, but I like for it to be right the first time.
I'd rather it be lengthy and be right.
Without a doubt.
Must be looking back saying, woulda, shoulda, coulda.
Thank you, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, sir. All right, County Administrator, Mr. Bear.
I haven't done anything this much the past week, so I don't.
Just standing up, go ditto what Mr. Hankins said. It was a group project.
Yeah, let me give a couple of items there, action items, the easiest ones there to start off with, electronic summons, transfer, you have a request, come to the sheriff's office, recommend approval of the transfer of funds for the electronic summons.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second. Have a motion to second any questions or discussion. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Abstain to be safe.
Abstain.
Aye.
So approved, five to two.
I have another one from the Sheriff's Department requesting a secondary live scan fingerprinting system to be installed up in the general district courtroom. They've worked with the court clerk for a location of it. Request a transfer, the $11,168 from the courtroom security fund, and to amend and appropriate the same to 31022461260, police supplies.
And I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second, any questions or discussion. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
All right.
Next one is a amendment appropriation request of $1,000 into line item 1301453010. Mr. Count's got a reimbursement from the state for postage in this past year's absentee voting. Currently over budget, needs that money appropriated into that.
Entertain a motion to amend and, or amend and appropriate, or just appropriate?
Amend and appropriate.
Amend and appropriate. Have a motion, Mr. McRoberts, have a second. Have a motion, a second, any questions or discussion. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Next item, Mr. Hankins has been here long enough and Ms. Quinn trusts him enough to add him to our banking account, so request that the board authorize adding Mr. Hankins to the county bank account with signature authority.
So moved. Have a motion, have a second, any questions or discussion. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
Hey, I've been here longer than you, and they never had me, so they trust me more.
Next is the appointments. The Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority Department expires June 30th, 2021. Ms. Lawson's currently serving on that, is eligible for appointment if she is interested. We don't have to do that tonight, but you certainly may if you'd like. Kim Ayers' term, which she just recently came on, but she, her term that she was fulfilling expires on the June 30th for the library board, and she's eligible for appointment. And then we do need two appointments for the college board by June 30th, and there is a long list of qualifications in there from the college board, from the college president. So no action needed tonight unless Ms. Lawson is just interested in serving at this point in time, but other than that, we do need to be looking for those. If anything staff can assist you all with, please let us know.
Mr. Bear, I had somebody contact me about Mountain Cat needing someone on the board vacancy. Do you know anything about that?
I did. They had talked about a person on our staff helping them out, and then they contacted her and said they thought they had someone else that would be interested, but I have not gotten that name yet. You may have.
The name that I got was Catherine Hagwood. I don't know if that's the same person, but she was.
I think that would be a good appointment, sir.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Catherine Hagwood to the Mountain Cat Board.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion, a second, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved, and I will get her contact information for you, Ms. Collins.
And if someone would like to nominate me for the CRAFA board, I'm willing to continue to serve.
I'll nominate Ms. Lawson.
Have a motion for Mr. Smith and a second for Mr. Terry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Boy, that's quick.
We should have a meeting soon. I told Mr. Manley, I want my distribution allotment, so we should be having a meeting to declare a dividend soon.
Mr. Bear, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Bear, the one that we asked about last week on the Apex Authority?
Yes, I have reached out. I have not gotten a response on that yet. But I reached out to the individual and to the board both to see if, to see if still serving, interested in serving, but I do know have not been attending many of the meetings.
And talking about the WCC board kind of goes back to Mr. Smith, what you talked about. I don't know if it was our last meeting about the Farm Bureau. Mr. Snap is not eligible to serve anymore. One of the criteria or the people they look for is somebody involved in agriculture. I've reached out to one person, but his wife is a part-time employee at WCC, says he can't serve, so if anybody knows of anybody that works in agriculture, I think, I personally would like to replace Mr. Snap with somebody that has their hand in ag, but.
I'm sure between me and Mr. Horni, we can, we can hit them up and see who's interested.
You got one of yours?
That's probably the one I already called, but his wife works part-time at WCC.
I figured that was John.
No, I was talking about Matthew. I don't know if John, I think John's about retired, serving on board lately. I'll call and ask, but I just wanted to put that out there in case we couldn't find somebody. Anything else on the board appointments, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
You have anything else?
I do. I'll keep going. Rural Tree Volunteer Emergency Services, they sent in a request for their remaining allotment for FY '21. Our emergency services coordinator went and met with Captain Michelle and Chairman, Captain Mitchell and Chairman Roger Hedrick. They got reimbursement request for approximately $12,708. I request authorization to, for staff to go ahead and issue a check to Rural Tree Volunteer Emergency Services in the amount of $17,708.44, and I would say up to that amount. That would be with proper backup for the $12,708 request, an additional $5,000 to assist them with their hardship. And then look at setting up a meeting. I've talked to the town manager at Rural Tree about, just making certain, since the Rural Tree provides a lot of funding for them, that a couple of our members and a couple of their members sat down with them and closely reviewed their financial situation. I would recommend having Mr. Hankins and Mr. McCabe join in on that meeting to sit with them and go through financial review and see what we can do to help them out and see what may be creating any of the issues there.
Wilson Young, in fact, can't do without him, so I'll make a motion and give him the $5,000.
So if you will, just make a motion to issue the check for the $17,708.44, up to that amount.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion for Mr. McRoberts to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any questions or discussion. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Mr. Volts, that's your district, I assume. You would be interested in it. Is there another board member that?
Well, I don't know if I was going to put that out. Either I can, I can do it, or do you want two people from the Fire and Rescue Committee, since they're used to looking at those budgets? Or one person, I don't, whatever y'all want to do.
I'll do it if somebody, I mean, I don't care to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind being one person, since I'm, I mean, it doesn't matter to me, however y'all want to do it.
I'm good with whatever Ms. Lawson and Mr. McRoberts wants to do, because the three of us serve on that committee together, so.
If you two, I mean, I don't have my phones, if you two want to handle it or if you need anything.
I mean, that's.
Okay.
Part of this, though, is, and I think lead mines is. Part of this, though, is, and I think Lead Mines is in the same boat, is from what I understand, Medicare's not paying their bills. Can we reach out to Congressman Griffith's office and either him take care of it or request a meeting? Do we need to send a letter as a board to his office? I mean, what...
I don't think it would hurt anything, and Mr. Hankins does a good job from his previous experience of working in one of those positions, of helping write letters, and I think sending a letter, and if you would like, we'll send it on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, because yes, and I think Withfield's obviously having the same problem, but basically Medicare, historically, the beginning of the years, ends up having delays on it, and it's hurting all of them.
But we've dealt with that for years, but this is almost the first of May. You know, the government's got enough money to send out these stimulus checks, they need to pay their bills. That's all I'll say about it.
Well, I mean, I know we talked about putting the units and hardships on each one of those units, but it's really the citizens of the county that the hardships fall on.
It is, it does, absolutely.
I mean, you think about it, the first time one of those units don't roll, this room right here will be packed.
Yeah, that's, they have provided us, and that's one of the questions we've got, they provided us a list of their outstanding things, and that's part of discussion for us to have in a meeting, that there's one that's real late, and the next month it looks like everything was paid, and then the next month it wasn't, and I don't know if that's something on the paperwork side, or if that's something on the federal side, and that's, once we have that meeting, we'll know exactly, so we can push the letters to the legislators and say, this is that outstanding amount.
All right, sound like a plan.
All right. Next item of business is the contract amendment for VNM Recycling. VNM Recycling has a, in the contract and the bid documents that we put out, there was a clause in there that allowed the contract to be amended for minimum wage increase. Mr. Bowers and I met with Mr. Moore, reviewed the amounts of the increase, and I recommend approval of the amendment to the contract, taking the rate up from 113,000 to a month for, to 118,69602 for the rest of this fiscal year. Then you'll see increase to 119,807 for the first two quarters of next year, then when minimum wage goes up again, an increase to 124,845 for the next two quarters, and then FY '23, going ahead and moving that up to 124,84573. And if the next round of increases goes in, we'll probably have to amend that fifth year as well.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the contract amendment that's presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, is there any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, dear boy. Here and now, do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith. So approved, I only got started on the federal government, you ain't gonna get me started on the state.
All right, the next item on there is the proposed cigarette tax ordinance. Recommendation is to go ahead and look at setting a public hearing at May 25th at 6:10 PM for the consideration of the proposed cigarette tax ordinance. I believe Blaine County was actually having theirs tonight, I'll find out tomorrow the outcome of their meeting. This ordinance is the same ordinance that basically all the localities that are looking at, working within the Mount Rogers Cigarette Tax Board Group are looking at. The tax is basically two cents per cigarette, which is the 40 cents per package. Be glad to answer any questions that you have, but recommend that we go ahead and put this out for a public hearing.
Entertain a motion to set the public hearing for May 25th, 2021 at 6:10 PM.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, have a second, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
Uh, yes, sir. Next item I have on the budget is a, on page 245, is a draft public hearing notice for the proposed tax levy. During our budget discussions, we've talked about that we do have some shortfall from our expected revenues to our expected expenditure budget. However, we do have quite a bit of carryover funds from the school system and potentially from the county, and also the carryover funds of funds not spent this year from the refinancing that we did. Discussion that you all have had is to not be looking at a tax increase. My recommendation, and this helps out the Commissioner and the Treasurer, the quicker we go ahead and set the tax rates, the quicker that starts them have been able to go ahead and work on the books without it pushing into the late timeframe.
Commissioner still has till September 30th to get the books ready and train started, but it just depends on how quickly they can get that finished, just to how soon we can start our work, because we have about six weeks left of work we have to do. Still get the ball started, so...
So my recommendation is go ahead and hold a public hearing on the tax levy on May 25th. Then subsequently, we can hold the public hearing on our budget at the June 8th meeting, and then look at the adoption of it by June 30th. But feel free to revise these numbers if so wanted, but I think based on input from you all, everything has been leaving them the same.
Oh, you want to drop them?
I would not recommend it this year.
You about moved it, Mr. Hankins, I thought he was gonna stroke that. Entertain a motion to advertise or to conduct a public hearing on the tax rate.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Expenditure budget discussion is the last thing that's on my list, other than Information Light and Animal Control. Obviously, I know we're two hours in tonight, we're pretty set on the budget, there's a couple of things that we need to finalize on the budget. Looks like next Tuesday works best for most everybody, May 4th, for a work session starting at 5:00 for the water, wastewater rate discussion. Was going to see if y'all wanted after that, and we'll have some food in the back as well, but after that, sort of finalize our budget number discussions at that point in time.
Are you enticing ants with food?
Yes.
I like how you threw that in the middle.
5:00 is what I was proposing, if that works for everyone.
May 4th?
May 4th, yes, sir.
Works for me.
Works for me, I'm good.
Okay.
Good for me.
Animal control inspection, the copy of the report is in there, we had a good inspection. That's good to hear, just wanted to share that with everyone, appreciate the staff. We did, we didn't always get these, and I commend staff for their work on the cleanliness and keeping everything lined up, and also all the volunteers that come in and help us down there that are able to assist us on that. I did hand out one item, we discussed this in the Water Committee report the other day. We bid out Austonville Wastewater Project. The Austonville wastewater system is a very old system. We have infiltration and exfiltration issues down there. We were able to get a funding from VRA in the amount of $810,000. $203,000 of that was a forgivable, a principal forgiveness note. The rest of it, it says 0.5% interest rate on it, but it's actually, works out to basically interest-free loan on it with the principal forgiveness. The project was bid out. It came in overbid for the plant replacement and rehabilitation and for the collection system rehabilitation. Staff reached out to the funding sources, we talked to the funding sources. There are several water wastewater projects going on right now, several of the contractors, and you'll see here that there were several people's names listed, they picked up copies of the contract, they just did not bid on it based on the amount of work that they had. It was my understanding from Rural Development, we heard that Washington County is in the middle of a $30 million line replacement project that has many phases and apparently has several contractors tied up, and that's why a lot of them did not bid on this. That work is not expected to finish until 2022. Mr. Chris passed down here a couple of the options we talked about. One of them is we could reject bids, look at bidding this later, but with the number of contracts out there and the way prices are going right now, we as staff don't see that we can recommend, and it may be more advantageous for us to price this out later. Our recommendation is, we've talked with DEQ, they have indicated, VRA and DEQ, they have indicated that we can request an extension, this was supposed to be closed by May 1st, they have indicated we can request an extension of this, and then we can also look at requesting additional funds, and based on the bid environment and what sponsors we got, we think we would not have any problem getting those additional funds. It would be at the no-interest loan. But staff's recommendation at this time is to authorize us going ahead and requesting an extension of the closing date with VRA, and we will negotiate with the contractor to see what savings we can have on this project, and probably look at awarding this project within 60 days, once we come back with information. So recommendation B, request the extension of, a request that we send a letter, request the extension of VRA loan terms.
So do you need us to take action?
Yes, sir, I would request that, and we can put that in a letter.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, a second, is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved.
Ms. Collins, is my report longer than Mr. Hankins', can I stop now? I am finished, Mr. Chairman.
Our county attorney reported, Mr. Forley, about skip.
Yeah, that's okay, Mr. Chairman, I passed out a list of some current assignments that I kind of am tracking with Mr. Bear, and that's all I have to report on at the moment, unless you guys have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Forley?
I don't.
I would say, Mr. Chairman, I think you guys want this report to be very short, you know, the legal end to be very quiet, so...
Yeah, we don't, we really don't want you doing it.
Keep your report.
That's all I have.
All right, moving to Board of Supervisors time, Mr. Smith.
Believe it or not, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any.
Because you got your roads out. Mr. Cook?
I have nothing at this time.
Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. McRoberts?
I don't have anything, huh?
Mr. Horny?
I was gonna say, I should have said something to Andy, and I forgot about it a while ago. The smell at the bottom of Spiegel Hill from their, I'm pretty sure it's from their catch pond, it's went from cow manure to, smelled like a pig's butt. It's horrible. Other than that, I don't think I had anything.
I will say Saturday, when I come through there, it's been a while, that's the cleanest I've seen that road, and all the time...
Yeah, they're keeping the road clean, but that smell, something else.
Uh, Mr. Terry?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Fowler, I think, had mine, but mine was roads, too, so... All right, anything else before we go into closed session? All right, entertain a motion to go into closed session under Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A3, acquisition or disposition of real property, and Section 2.2-3711A5, prospective new business or industry in reference to project flow.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second, any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, hold on one second, do we need any other thing besides project flow, sir? And I can give you some more names, if you want to talk about them generally, but I'll have to add that some of them are... Honeybee and 104...
Uh, I can do that, I can talk about Honeybee.
And Project Honeybee.
Add that to my motion.
All right, do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
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 Now, closed session.
Entertain a motion to come out of...
Closed session, have a motion, have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We're now on open session, Mr. McRoberts, if you'll read the certification.
Resolution, certification to closed meeting, where as the Withfield County Board of Supervisors convenes a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmatively recorded vote, and then according to the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where as Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Withfield County Board of Supervisors hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as identified in the motion convenes a closed meeting were heard, discussed, are considered by the Withfield County Board of Supervisors, and I'll make a motion to accept.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Before we, do we need to note for the record that Mr. Smith was not present for the whole closed session, that he stepped out during project flow? Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to recess until May the 4th at 5:00 PM. Have a motion, have a second. A motion, a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now in recess.